And I have started the recording, but you still got a couple of seconds.
It is five twenty-nine.
You have, you have ten seconds?
Uh-oh.
Eight, seven.
All right. I'll call the meeting to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Yes. Al Blumer.
Here.
Jeff Benedetto.
Here.
Teresa Wiesler.
Here.
Sue Foisey.
Here.
Marie Olson.
Here.
Polly Richter.
Here.
And Sandy Conley.
Here.
Okay, we don't have any minutes, is that correct?
Um, we do not, if you'd like me to take ten seconds and address that, I will.
Sure.
We will have minutes. So, um, the, the short version is, we've been short a staff person, so I have the money to do it. We're gonna go back and get all of the minutes that are there, addressing it. Um, the one thing I'm holding off on right now, um, I had reached out to Cody and, and if, if whoever comes in and, and is, is awarded that, that, um, position that is currently Cody filling, that they are willing to do a dictate at that same rate, what we'll do is we'll pay them to do it, because there will be a lot of institutional knowledge that transfers through that process. And if it's cost prohibitive, then we'll just hire a transcription service. So, um, I'm, I'm not giving you a timeline, but two, three months from now, we will have all the minutes going back historically.
Okay, good.
Dave, are you gonna do them in chronological order, or are you gonna pick some of the top hot, hot topics first?
If I get direction from the, um, leadership of the planning board, that you have targeted ones, we'll do those first. But otherwise, I'm just, we'll just start through and go on back. But we can do it in whatever order is needed. Um, the one disadvantage is, and, and maybe we can do it with, uh, whoever the person is the first time or two, and they're gonna be legally sufficient minutes, not verbatim, is the thinking. Um, and what they do is spend some time with them, so that they don't just say speaker one, speaker two, speaker three, which is one of the concerns of giving it to a, to, to just a, a transcription service. Um, and hopefully after a meeting or two, they might get a little bit better at that. Um, but if you have specific ones you wanna do first, uh, be looking back and identifying the topics and targets, and we'll do those in the orders that you request them.
Thank you.
Do you have any thoughts about that, Al? Whether to do it, I, I don't remember or have enough memory to know what the topics have been.
I, I think the agendas are still posted online, so it may just be a going through and reviewing the agendas and saying that one, that one, that one. And, and I think that once we start, it'll be a relatively quick process. So the time between the first one and the last one, likely under thirty days, so it may not really make a difference. The, 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 the most honest answer is, Al, I hadn't considered that, but I have zero problem doing the ones you specify first.
Okay, well, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here. If we can do them chronologically within thirty days, that'd probably work out all right. It's just that some of our hotter topics come up, where we need to refu- uh, refer to minutes. We've identified a few of those, so, but let, let's go ahead and do it chronologically until we decide differently.
And, and it'll probably be reverse chronological, just because that, to me, is the more likely scenario that you'd need.
Right. Yeah.
That was what my initial thought, and it's just start backwards and work our way back.
Okay.
All right, um, communications from the board, um, the urban renewal agency updates. Um, we met last, uh, on Monday and, uh, discussed various options in terms of, uh, developing criteria and, uh, on how to rate, um, um, proposals that come before the agency. Um, also, they decided to basically have one application process that would, um, rather than having applications come in piecemeal, um, those would, and so they would basically have, once a year, there would be an announcement to make applications for urban renewal agency, or pr- make a proposal to the agency in terms of what their project is and, and what they would like to receive funds for. Um, that's, uh, pretty much, I think, pretty much all we've covered. And that's a process, or it continue, it's probably gonna take a couple of meetings to develop the criteria and a, and a scoring, a way to score proposals or evaluate proposals based on a rating system.
And, and we're gonna have to come up with a source of Red Bull, so that everybody can keep up with Joanne Eater.
Um, city council representative update, Sandy?
Yes, I did go ahead and send an update to everybody, so that I wouldn't forget. But there is one very important update that I did not include, and that was the reappointment of the mayoral appointments of Al and Susan Foisey. So, um, that would leave one seat open, and we had two applicants for it. And Pete Crittelli will be joining the planning board at the beginning of April. I believe the term ends March thirty-first. And that's it.
Okay. Uh, Marie, do you have any updates from county?
Not pertaining to planning board, no.
Okay. Um, new business as, uh, the, as an action item is election of officers. And, uh, our bylaws, uh, identify that the first meeting in March would be, we would elect officers for the upcoming year. And, uh, Al and I are s- are interested in continuing in that role, um, as chair and vice chair. Um, we can, I guess there's two options here. One is to basically have an amendment, um, or a motion to, to accept Al as, Blumer as chair and myself as, as vice chair. If there's disagreement among the board about that process, then we'll go through the normal nomination process.
I would love to, um, oh, I don't know, I was going to move, because I can't see you. I would like to move to have, uh, Al and Jeff continue in their current roles, they've done a great job.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been, uh, moved in second that Al and I would continue for another year. Um, is there any discussion? All right, uh, can I have a roll call, uh, Cody?
Yes. Al?
Uh, yes.
Jeff?
Uh, yes.
Teresa?
Yeah.
Sue?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
And Sandy?
Yes.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Crapping for everyone.
Al took too long to think about that.
All right, next on the agenda is discussion of subdivision regulations update, and I guess that would be you, Cody?
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide some background, I know that's been a, um, priority for both, identified by both you guys and town council, or city council. So, I just wanted to throw out some general, um, dates and timelines, so you kinda know what you're looking at for whenever you do move forward. And ideally, you'd have a planner on staff that could lead the charge on this, but that may or may not be the case. You may have a contract planner, but regardless, I just wanted to give you some ideas and options. So there, you, everybody knows, there was a massive legislative overhaul on land use reform in twenty-twenty-three. So therefore, there are some pretty significant changes to subdivision regulations, um, that, to be legally compliant, need to happen. So, the Montana League of Cities and Towns and Mako, Montana Association of Counties, came together and created a, like a model regulation document. And basically, it's got all the nuts and bolts to be statutorily compliant within the administrative pieces, with some flexibility for freedom and, um, more specific ideas and proposals within the design standards component. Um, so overall, we're, I've been recommending that people kind of start with that template or that model document and work from that, just because you know it's got all the pieces in place. So we can, I can get that to you guys, so you have it, and I can pass along to Mayor Dave, so you have it moving forward. Um, but from there, generally, it takes about, well, eight to ten months to wrap up a subdivision regulation update. Um, with all the new statutory requirements, there's not as much ability to bring in public opinion on especially the administrative side of things. So that will cut down your outreach piece, only because you'll just really have one section to work from, 'cause we've just gotta operate within more rules than historically. Um, so it's not an awful process, I think there's a really good starting place for any community moving forward. But, yeah, it's something you probably wanna look at within, at least kicking off, I would say, within this year, for sure. Um, aside from that, you also have the option, you could apply for a CDBG planning grant to achieve that update. And those grants, the next cycle, the next grant application is due the end of June, June twenty-eighth. Um, so you've got some time to think on that, and then there's another cycle in November of this year. Generally, it takes about three months to hear back on those grant awards, but it at least provides the community some money to move forward if you didn't, did wanna contract out or get some support. Um, the CDBG awards are up to fifty thousand dollars. Generally, subdivision regulation updates don't take more than thirty, so just keep that in the back of your mind. There is a twenty-five percent match required on those CDBG grants. Um, and that can't be provided through in-kind, so. And the other piece of that is, you can't have any other CDBG planning grants open, if you're gonna apply for a new one, so. And I don't think you have any right now, unless you've applied this last round, so. So I just wanted to put that out there for you guys, that, just some info to have as you move forward.
Quick question?
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna send us a, a copy of this, so we get a chance to read it, is that the state code that you're gonna send us?
There's a model document out there, so I'll send it to the mayor, and then, um, he can pass it out to you guys, yeah.
Okay, and, and I guess my question is, how much flexibility does local, uh, government have on that? Do we have to follow that specifically, or can, can local jurisdictions make some adjustments?
You could do your own thing entirely. Um, the safeguard in the model document is, we know that administratively, it's a hundred percent on point with the statutory regulations now. So, but there is flexibility within it also, especially the design standards, that's all an open blank slate, so.
I, I'm think, I'm, I'm thinking of the situation that we're facing at the spires.
Okay.
Would that have been cut, would that have been covered under this document?
Which component?
Well, we're talking about, they wanted to do some rezoning at the spires, and then there was a subdivision issue and all that. I was wondering, would that be covered under this document?
It may, it may not. Um, I think you can button up those pieces within it, yes, and streamline the process a little. But I think with the spires, there's a handful of things happening. It's a subdivision, it's a PUD, it's, it's a zoning, it's, you know, there's like three things going at the same time. So that's where it gets a little confusing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I have a question, I guess, uh, some of that legislation only applied to communities of five thousand or more. Is that, is this one of those things, or is it more for all communities?
Um, this is more of a baseline, and the document itself does have a lot of notes. It's really terrible formatting-wise, but there's a lot of notes in the sidebar of what does apply to which sides of communities and what doesn't.
And then you mentioned there's limited opportunity for public involvement.
Not.
Could, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah.
That to me is a little assertive.
Yeah, no, not limited in the sense you can't have any. But, you know, generally, when, in the past, when we've created subdivision regulations, we're starting from scratch. And so it's kind of like, a lot of communities end up with twenty work sessions to develop this subdivision regulation document. Well, now, there's a lot more, the reality of what's happened in land use reform is there's a lot more stringent guidelines on what local control there is at the administrative level, meaning process primarily, how you're processing things, the timelines for those. So those pieces, that's just, it's law now. So there's no wiggle room, where before, it was kind of like, well, whatever works best for you. But now, there's a lot more restriction on how you process certain developments within subdivision.
The other question I have is, I thought I had read where a number of the larger communities in Montana has, um, entered into a lawsuit to challenge some aspects of that law. What's the status of that, and how does that affect us?
Yeah, so that's specific to Senate Bill three eighty-two. Um, Senate Bill three eighty-two is a law or a regulation that requires communities of five thousand or more, and basically, that's our, or ten thousand or more, that's our big ten, right? Like the Kalispels, the Billings, the Missulas, Bozeman's, to create what's called a comprehensive plan. And this comprehensive plan is more of an all-inclusive document that has, it, how it reads to me is, a growth policy, regulations, zoning, it's all in one. And it's very much based around future land use. Um, there's a whole component of this massive undertaking of where we want to see development and how we want to see that happen. So that comprehensive plan right now is only mandatory for those larger cities. Writing's on the wall that it's, eventually, it might make its way down to smaller communities as well, but right now, we're not there. So that's what that court challenges against, is that specific Senate bill. Um, and some communities, they didn't have a long time to get this wrapped up, they gave them like three years. And this is a brand-new document to the state of Montana, so it's a little bit, like everyone's kind of fumbling on, oh, we don't even know where to start. Um, and there's one other piece of that, is a whole, basically, a regulation plan document on public participation and how you're going to manage it. So there has been some challenge on that bill. But these other specific statute changes are more, that we're talking about in the sub-brigs, are specific to, um, exemption reviews, family transfers, how you process first minor subdivisions, um, those pieces. And those have not been challenged, so those are a go.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Cody? All right. Are you pretty well, is that what you wanted to cover, Cody?
Yep, just wanted to give you guys some background as you move forward.
All right, uh, move right along to old business, um, Bear Tooth Front Community Forum. Um, last couple meetings, I talked to the board or shared with the board, uh, Bear Tooth Front Community Forum is, is interested in, uh, doing a, a community forum on growth policies, um, primarily to basically increase people's awareness about what growth policies are, um, their purpose and intent. Um, the point of the forum isn't necessarily to get into the specifics of, of our current, uh, growth policy. But at the last meeting, um, we decided to basically break the forum up into three different segments. Kind of the opening segment would be just a broad overview about, uh, growth policies, um, the kind of information that goes into them, um, and the relationship and basis for supporting community development funding. Um, Bear Tooth Resource Conservation District will, is it, is interested in doing that presentation. I had reached out to Headwaters Economics, since a lot of the information that they provide has been incorporated into, into our, our growth policy in the past. Um, and, uh, we had originally talked about having Dan Clark, um, also a part of that, um, to provide his knowledge on, about, uh, growth policies in generally. And he responded back saying that he really wasn't qualified to, to delve into the specifics of what growth policies are. And he actually suggested Jerry Greenack.
Oh, yeah.
That I, as a person to reach out to, uh, to see if he's interested and, and available. Um, the second segment, um, is going into a little bit more specificity in terms of the Carbon County growth policy, as well as, uh, uh, Red Lodge growth policy. Again, not into reviewing each specifics, but what's the history, how long have they been in place? Um, what's the process? What's the timeline for reviewing the Red Lodge growth policy? And then opportunities for community involvement and engagement. And then the final segment is basically, uh, a tabletop discussion that's facilitated and, uh, and, and would, um, basically, we, still kind of working through what that would entail in terms of, of topics. And, um, but part of that would be, in, the intent of that would be to basically be sort of a kickoff to the future focus group sessions that you've talked about, Cody.
Yeah.
So that's just kind of the general outline of where we're at right now. Um, it'll be at the senior center, um, probably from nine o'clock until about one o'clock, with lunch provided.
And, and remind me the date again?
Um, we settled on May eleventh, I believe. We had talked about May fourth and eleventh, but I think one of the presenters is only available on the eleventh, so.
So nine to one?
Yeah, yeah, basically.
And I did tell Al I would do that, did he relay that to you?
Okay, good.
And, uh, I did have a, a conversation with Chad at Great West, because we have, in, in addition to our contract planning services through them, we actually have some other contracts that cover specific things. Um, and I wanna say this was one of them, and the, the summary of that, and he's sending me, uh, a written follow-up, so that I can make sure all our notes compare. Um, but they are still anticipating on, yes, fulfilling that responsibility in that role. So even though, excuse me, it may, um, it may not be, uh, Cody, um, I am anticipating support from Great West.
Go ahead, Al.
Okay, um, I did have a brief conversation with Marie, and did I hear her just say that she's willing to be part of the planning?
Yes, yes, Al.
Oh, that, that's really good, thank you, Marie. Um, where I, where I see the planning board members really participating in this is in the third segment, when we have the breakout groups. Although we're still in the planning stage, it would be nice if we could have a planning board member at each of those tables to help facilitate those discussions and to take notes as we get input as we move forward. So, uh, hopefully, the planning board members, um, can set aside that May eleventh date, 'cause I think it's important that, uh, we participate, certainly in that third segment. Um, did I hear that Jerry is now gonna facilitate that, or is that still up in the air?
Uh, we're reaching out to him to see if he's available, but I probably need to coordinate that with Dave.
He's with Great West, so the, the reality is that there's two parallel conversations here, and if we apply a modus operandi's argument, A then B, B then C, A therefore C, my guess is it's likely. Um, because Chad has told me they plan on fulfilling that obligation, and we know Jerry is their resource that works there, so that bodes well. But I, let's not commit to it, but, but I, I think it's fair to cross our fingers and hope that's where things are going.
Um, I'm not sure I got all of that, Dave, but whether Great West is a, a consultant or not, he still has the expertise. We could still use him if he's available, right?
Absolutely, but then it's an independent conversation. Given that Chad called me up specifically to say we will meet our obligation to help with that.
Right.
I, 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 I think we may not be doing the asking, he may get voluntold.
Okay. And, and the other part of that is, and, and again, we're still in the planning stage, is that, uh, Jeff, or probably I, would give some brief history of, of the growth policy process within the, within the city, and that would be a very short presentation. Are we still working on that, Jeff?
Well, that's one option, the other option is if we have a planner, whether it's contract or not.
Yes, yes.
In place, at that time.
That, that would be.
Better for the, for planner.
Yeah, that would probably be better, so.
And, and I, I anticipate that both of those will be the case. Um, the, we, we lose Cody for new things in the middle of April. She has agreed to stay through the end of the month as we wrap up a couple of things.
Okay.
But anticipation is the new will be in place, um, mid-April. I believe it's probably worth mentioning that one of the pieces of news that, that, uh, that Chad did deliver today is that they will not be submitting for that position. And it's basically, um, they used to have a really great planner, but she up and quit on him. And so she left him high and dry, and they just have the resources yet.
That's not fair.
Okay, well, like I said, it's still pretty fluid, and, and Maria and I will participate, uh, representing the planning board and trying to make sure that, and Jeff is kind of wearing double hats here with the forum and the planning board. So the planning board is, we're gonna be well-represented in this planning stage, so I'm pretty happy with that. And hopefully, with the schedules ahead of us, with Maria and I, we can participate in these meetings. But, uh, certainly can participate in, in April, I'm not so sure about March right now, so we'll see.
Can you just CC me in on that email for like the next meeting, and hopefully I can come?
Yeah, I'll add you to the mailing list.
Okay.
And, uh, I can send you some of the notes from our previous meetings.
Yeah, catch me up.
Has anybody else got any questions about, um, the forum?
It's at the senior center, how big is, how many people can you accommodate?
I think seventy to a hundred, I think.
Seventy, yeah, a hundred, up to a hundred. It's just been a while since I've been in there.
I mean, that's pretty tight, but seventy-five, comfortable.
We've had some pretty big forums there. They, they had one on aging in place, which, to me, is a pretty hot topic, and had, and, and it was more than sufficient to cover that crowd, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and typically, we've had anywhere from fifty to seventy or more participating. And then, and again, if the idea is just to kind of get the information out to the general public in terms of what growth policies are, and, and that they actually function for more, more than just guiding how land use regulations may be developed, but they're, they're important documents for supporting, um, applications for grants and, uh, that meet the goals and objectives of the growth policy, so.
Good deal.
So, um, next on the list is, uh, planning board priority pat rankings. Do you wanna go into that, Al, a little bit?
I was muted there, just before I get there, uh, this will be, uh, this forum will be the first opportunity for the public to have input, but there will be others as well, is that correct, Cody?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page on this priority ranking. I sent everybody a, um, a copy, recognizing this is a fluid document, so this is as of the current meetings. And, uh, what you see there is the, the, the highest priorities are in green, and, and, and it shows what the. and, and, and it shows what the, uh, planning board priorities were versus what the council priorities were. And we were pretty much on track there, uh, and the council added two additional ones, um, which we've given a high number to, and that's annexation, de-annexation requirements, and also building on city-owned land and requirements procedure. So I just wanted to make sure everybody had the latest document. I sent it to you. And, um, recognize, as I said, things come up, but this is where we are now. And we're currently working and planning on the revitalization plan and, and the growth policy. Uh, those are our top two, and those are the ones we're working on now.
Any questions or comments from the board about that? Right.
It was a good process, and I thanked everybody for their participation, and, and I was glad to see that the planning board and the council were pretty much on the same page, so that's, that's reassuring.
Once, once the technical issues were removed from the process, it wasn't anywhere near as alarming.
Yeah, true.
Sandy, are you, uh, still on?
Look, I don't see her.
I think, I think we lost Sandy. She's going to the concert, but, uh, in her doc, in her report, she mentioned that the council and the, um, planning board were certainly aligned, uh, as of today, anyway.
Okay. All right, um, moving along to written correspondence, um, staff communication. Is that you, Cody?
Uh, Dave, do you want to start this? Or?
Um.
Do you have anything?
The, the only, the only thing that I had questioned, uh, whether we're going to bring, we were going to bring up or not, I have, uh, sense elected to not bring up at, at staff communication. I'll, I'll summarize it as, um, I anticipate that we're going to see a change. I'm, I'm going to intentionally be generic, and I would appreciate everybody within my earshot respecting and staying generic, even, even if your detective hat is on and you're going, oh, so stay generic. I anticipate that we are going to be getting a request for a zoning change. It has to do with the fact where a PUD provides for certain types of construction, and it turns out the underlying zoning change does not facilitate the type of construction designated in the PUD. And so the, the correct process is to come through this board officially, make public notice, um, and do that. And my initial inclination was to reach out to the board and kind of get a sense. I made the determination, let's, let's just have the conversation, jump through all the hoops and dot the i's and cross the t's, which was the plan, but, but there, there isn't a need to, to talk about it at this level. Just, I anticipate that there's going to be some work coming up for this board.
Okay.
Is, is, is that a fair way to introduce that and, and, and pass it by?
Yeah, I agree. And additionally, like, things are starting to pick up, right? It's springtime, so people are getting busy and starting to look at what they're going to do. So it's a lot of generic questions, a lot of process questions on passing applications along. So I think you guys are going to see a bit of, a bit of work here coming up, but it's not here yet, so.
It's like, defense requests, we're just going directly to the building planner.
Yeah.
Or the, to, to the, to the, the building inspector, so, so we're not, I'm, we're working together to determine which ones are appropriate to be here, but at the same time, not bringing things to you that aren't. She got guidance. She was able to provide guidance on, on building a fence, but that's not something that's a conditional use, for example, so.
All right, anything else, Cody?
No, sir.
All right. Um, kind of open it up to petitions and communication from the audience. Does anybody like to, uh, speak to the planning board? And, and if so, uh, announce your name and, and address, of course.
And, and please, the mics that pick this up are all up on their desk, so speak loudly.
Uh, my name is Pete Crotelli, and I live in Red Lodge, and I'm looking forward to joining the board next month. Uh, in reference to Cody's report, I have to, I have to support all of that. Um, I was one of the principals, higher principals for Nordica Estates, um, Diamond Sea, but I was not involved with the spires. But it's critical that we, as we go forward, we understand this whole process from the pre-application meeting until the recording after it's approved by either the city council or the county commissioners. And each of those steps can take anywhere from 12 months to two years. Uh, and I look forward to participating and helping in any way I can, uh, as we evaluate new projects.
Thank you, Pete, and welcome to the planning board. Anybody else?
I can introduce myself, so that it can wear.
Can you come closer so we can get you on the mics?
Hi, I'm Mark Lindquist. I actually talked to Cody earlier today, so I just thought I'd sit in on a meeting. I'm looking at maybe doing some changes to my property, but I just thought I'd see what the city planning meeting was like. And thank you, Cody, for giving me all that information. I don't know where the camera is, but what do you think?
Right there.
Oh, okay. Some weirdo sitting in the corner, so I thought we should introduce myself. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody online want to make any public comments? Going once, twice? Okay. Um, any other business?
Yeah, uh, Jeff.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, first, uh, again, I want to welcome Pete, uh, onto our planning board and look forward to seeing him in April. And I want to, uh, take this opportunity to thank Polly for her, um, service and dedication. I know she's not quite done yet, and hopefully, we can, uh, embarrass the hell out of her at that March meeting, or certainly in April when I get back, but, uh, I really appreciate her efforts. And, uh, she's been a great member, and we'll probably be calling on her for her advice and counsel as, as the days go on, and I'm going to miss her sitting to my left, giving me a poke every now and then. But, uh, Polly, you're, you're a great member, and we'll miss you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. If there's anything else, we'll bring the meeting to a close.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jeff.
I know, right?